Good evening. My name is Sandra Schaeffer. I'm the president of the Democratic Women's Club of Greater Broward, and I have the pleasure this afternoon of interviewing, I mean, just speaking and talking to Debbie Hickson. She's the candidate for Broward County School Board Group Nine. That's the at-large seat. And we're going to talk, we're encouraging everyone to request their mail-in ballot, their vote-by-mail ballots. You have to do it and submit it before July the 20th in order for you to participate in the primaries, which is August 18, 2020. We don't know what the COVID situation is going to look like, so we're encouraging everyone to request their vote-by-mail ballot to make sure you vote in. Because you request it doesn't mean you have to use it. If you want to go out during early voting or on August 18th, you still have the option. But we want you to request that vote-by-mail ballot just in case something happens and you can't go out and you don't miss out on this opportunity to send, you know, to a person that you support, the candidate you support, to the position that they're running for. All right, so I've talked enough, and now we're going to have Debbie Hickson introduce herself to everyone that's watching.
Hi, my name is Debbie Hickson, and I guess I'll take this minute to say why I'm running.
Yes, that would be the next question. Why you decided to run? Why did you decide to run for this position at this time?
So I've been a teacher in the Broward County school system for the last 31 years. I started my career off at Blancher Lee High School. Then I transferred to South Broward High School, where I'm currently the magnet coordinator. I have been a swim coach. I have been a club sponsor. I have been a facilitator for workshops. I've been an ACE assessor for teachers that are coming in that are not from education but into business. So I've had a lot of different experiences in the school system. And I also am the widow of Chris Hickson, who was murdered at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. And in the last couple of years, I've been a really strong advocate for making our schools safer and also responsible firearm ownership. And when Robin Bartleman announced that she wasn't going to be running for the seat, started to think about, you know, how, if I keep asking for changes and I'm working for making schools safer and better mental health and just stronger environments for schools in our nation, I really should be willing to be at the table at our own local school system so that I can bring those changes to our own community.
Okay, so you're saying, well, let's just get right into it, right? You're saying that you wanted to run to make some changes in the school system. What types of changes are you looking to make?
So things that I'd like to see happen to be improved, some of them are changes, some of them are just improvements in the school system is to look at how we keep the perimeter of our schools safe. There are ways that we can do a better job and do it with more fidelity, single point of entry. Also, making sure that we have control of who comes in and out of the building, that we're doing a better job of looking at mental health for our students. And if there's an issue, are we working with outside agencies to identify what issues are? And not necessarily just putting, you know, our students, we don't necessarily want to arrest them. We want to make sure we're offering them the services that they can allow them to change the behaviors that are not successful, making them successful in a school setting. So I think that besides mental health, there's other services that are involved in that. And we need to make sure that we understand what's going on in our communities and how do we help them be more successful within the school system. I think teachers needs to be valued better, not just in pay, but also how we, how we look at the teacher's role within the school district. And, you know, teachers, the morale of teachers is very low. It's been pretty low for the last five or six years. And they just don't feel as if they're being valued. They're not given a choice to what kind of professional development that they're doing. They're not given a choice of what kind of programs get rolled out or if they, you know, once they're rolled out, they're not asked their opinion of how well it's working or how they can tweak it. And teachers just, they want to feel like they're part of the stakeholders in the school district, and we just don't feel that way right now.
Okay, so do you have an example of something that was rolled out and that the teachers aren't happy with that, of them having to deal with that at this point? Do you have an example of that?
Yeah, I have a couple. But the first one, so initially when Canvas was rolled out, which was about five years ago, teachers didn't buy into that. They didn't, it wasn't something that they didn't feel that they needed. They weren't really paying attention to it. And really, in the last, maybe just recently, probably 30 to 40% of the teachers were really engaged in Canvas and learning how to do it. Now, everybody knows how to use Canvas, but it was, they didn't see the value and why we needed an online platform within the classroom. And there were trainings and stuff, but teachers weren't really taking advantage of those trainings. And so Canvas may not be the best platform, and no one really did a survey or said to teachers, "How do you feel about this?" Because there's Blackboard, there's, you know, Pinnacle. Well, Pinnacle rolls into Canvas, but there's other types of programs. And no one really asked us what we would like to see used as the platform for doing virtual learning and rolling it into Pinnacle. It just kind of came out as Canvas. And because no one knew what it was, there was really low buy-in until we didn't have a choice in March. And everybody had to jump in on that. And, you know, the teachers, it takes them a little while to get the groove of new technology.
So when it came out five years ago, there was no mandatory training for the teachers to learn how to use it?
No.
And I think I saw an example of something similar. I know, like, when, because I have a daughter that's in the ESC program. And when everyone had to go online, it was like, there's like, "Oh, just come in and say hi. And then, you know, if you need us during these three hours, give us a call." And I was like, "That's not going to work. I have a child with special needs. She can't work independently." It was really, it was difficult to navigate. You know, I mean, once you figure it out, you can, it gets easier, but it's not, I didn't find it extremely user-friendly in the beginning. I have some familiarity with it because I did a graduate program where that's the platform that we use. And I heard you mention Blackboard. And I also teach, I teach at Miami-Dade College, and Blackboard is what we use. And if I had a choice between the two, I would, you know, I would have preferred Blackboard too if someone had an option. But I noticed that there was an issue with some of the teachers not being as familiar as they should be with the Canvas when we all had to lock down and go online. But hopefully, that got improved just because they had to use it. And for the parents that are going to decide to stay fully online in the fall, you know, they'll get a better academic experience with Canvas if that's what they choose to keep moving forward.
Yeah, but there's still not mandatory trainings for Canvas. I mean, if teachers want to go, they have like live or will they like pre-recorded trainings? And you can do that. There's two trainings for Canvas in the summer, but I think it's limited to maybe 30, 40 teachers, and it's full. So the idea that all of those teachers who struggled, that they're getting this great training over the summer is unfortunately not really the truth. And they want it. It's not that they don't want it. They do want to do a better job if that's how we're going to go next year. But it's not, it's not as it's being presented.
Okay, all right. So tell us, what do you see is the role of a person that's on the school board? What is the responsibility of a school board member?
So technically, when you look it up, they have...
So there's a difference between technically and what happens?
Right.
So let's do technically first, and then we'll talk about what sometimes happens. All right.
So what, by law or technically, what you have to do is do the budget. You have to vote on the budget, and you have to evaluate the superintendent. So those are the two legal things that school boards are required to do. But on a daily basis, what comes up is, of course, they vote on policies. And they are able to implement new programs if they, if there's something that they're passionate about. But really, I think the role of the school board member is to work with staff and stakeholders within the community to make decisions and move things forward that are best for the school system and the community.
Okay, and so to see that you're running for is an at-large seat. So you're going to be responsible for all of the students and all 31 cities that make up Broward County. I've spoken to several different people that are running. And, you know, and one of the things is that there's some disparity in what some schools have. Some schools have way too much. A lot of schools don't have enough. There's some school that need paint. They can't even get that. But then you have other schools that are filled with technology. As the at-large member, what will you do or what can you do to bring some more equity or more equitable distribution of things into the school system?
So I think what I would do first is go around to each of those communities and find out what it is that they feel that they need. Because I think what happens on the dais is you're going with expectations or ideas that you think are true, but you need to actually go into those schools and see what is happening to find out what they need. But I'm at a school in the east part of the county that definitely is on the lighter side of the resources. So I'm not sure how all of that gets distributed. But I believe that working with the staff to find out how we move these projects along quicker. I know when we put in a work order, it takes a long time to get someone out just to change the filter in the water fountain that we have. So it's across the county in different pockets of areas where they may get things quicker. I'm not sure why that happens. And I definitely, first thing that I would want to do is work with staff to find out how do we mainstream that better so that we know exactly who needs what, what's more urgent? And how do we do, example, we have mold in schools, right? We have ceilings that are falling in on some of them. Those things have to be addressed immediately. So I definitely, but part of the issue is, is that really the role of the school board member, right? You have to kind of, it's the role of the staff to do that. So I really think the key to being a good school board member is to work with staff to ask questions and then have those staff work their magic to make sure that those questions get answered in a way that is equitable for the different schools.
Okay, so when you say it's the role of the staff, what do you mean? So if there's something going on at the school, then the principal is supposed to notify who to get it fixed?
So they go through facilities. There's a work order that has to go in. And then the people at the district maintenance or, you know, wherever, maybe plumbing, it may be painting. That goes through a work order process. It's not something necessarily that the school board is voting on who gets what at, you know, on those kinds of things, bigger things like the bond issues and stuff. So it really is a matter of making sure that facilities is running smoothly. And again, I think it's about making those authentic relationships with people that are in those management positions in the district where you can say, "I see there's a disparity. How do we correct this?" It's not something you're going to necessarily do from the level of a school board member in the school board meetings. It's a matter of reaching out and being able to help people find those resources that they need.
Okay, all right. So teacher pay is one of the things that I keep hearing about. Does a member of the school board really have any control over teacher pay?
Well, they have, they do have control over raises and how those kinds of, you know, how often we're going to give percentages of that. A lot of it comes from the state, you know, the money that comes down. What happens is the state gives a pot of money. There's a suggestion, like the governor just raised the pay of new teachers. But when you read the fine print of that, it says that the school district is able to figure out how that's going to work. So it may say that it's, I think it's $47,500. But if the schools don't have, the district doesn't have the funds to provide new teachers with that amount of money, then how are they supposed to follow that guideline? So a lot of times mandates come down from the state that aren't funded with the school district. So it's an idea of looking at the budget that we have and figuring out how do you shift that around? Is there places where money is being spent unnecessarily? You know, there's a lot of high management positions that have very high salaries. So how does all of that balance out? So there's some stuff that they can do to help the teacher pay. But at the end of the day, the whole state is not being funded very well for education, the nation is not being funded very well for education. So we also have to be strong advocates and lobbyists at both the national and state level to try to get those legislators to make sure that their budgets include adequate funding for education.
Okay, so I'm going to give you like a fact pattern, right? So I have a daughter that's on special needs. And I realized that even though she's in a cluster, she's still not getting it, right? And she would benefit from having someone work with her one-on-one. How, if I came to you and I said, "My school board member, I need help with my daughter. Is there anything that you can do about with, for me to help facilitate something like that?"
So I also have a son who went through the special needs program. He was in, you know, an individual class. He's now aged out. So I know the frustrations of ESC parents. So I think my role as a school board member would be to help you navigate the system and make sure that I put you in connection with the people who are able to help you with that. My job is not to go in and tell them that they have to give you...
I need you too. I need you too. I'm one of those pushy parents. I'm like, "Listen, I voted for you. Get my kid in, get my kid..."
I hear you. Yeah, but I, I mean, I'm the magnet coordinator at South Broward. So I get a lot of parents who come to me with needs of things that are beyond what a magnet coordinator can do. But I always do try to find those resources for them. So, you know, I contact the district and say, "This parent needs this. Who do I call?" Instead of having the parent go through all of the steps to find the information, I usually do that work and say, "Okay, this is the person that you need to call to get this done." So I can do that, but it's not the role of a school board member to go in and tell school what they need to do.
And you're going to be like, "I did all that work and they still said no," right?
Well, you know, at the end of the day, if there's still an issue, I mean, you can always quietly or, you know, reach out to someone. But the idea that I could just go in as a school board member and wave a magic wand to make everything perfect, that would be a lie.
Okay, all right. Okay, so what about like school choice, right? I've been trying to get my, I'm going to just keep going with these examples. So I'm a parent, and I've been trying to get my daughter into this charter school. And they keep putting on this lottery and a waitlist. And I think that that would be the best situation for her. As a school board member, do you have any control over charter schools also, which I believe is part of the public school system? Would you be able to facilitate something like that? Or I'm just going to have to keep going on that waitlist and be part of that lottery? And maybe one day in the near future, or maybe never, my kid would ever get into this school, even though that's what she needs in order for to get the, to get the best out of the Broward County Public School System?
Yeah, well, we're a school of choice. Magnet programs are a school of choice. And yeah, it's a computerized, to be fair and equitable. You know, there's probably 10 other kids, 15 other kids that have the same exact situation you have.
It's more like 242, I think. Number 242 on the waitlist.
Right. So in order to be equitable for people, there's a computerized list that just, you know, there's a, there's a group of students who are eligible. It's a pool. The computer pulls out names randomly, and those are the people. So all we could do as, like, as a magnet coordinator is select that you're eligible. And that's really what my role is. I have a list, I have a waitlist of students to get into my program. And I get people, you know, answering me all the time. And I always tell them, "Just be patient." Because a lot of times what happens is it's a waitlist, but then five other people decide they want to go somewhere else. So you just have to be diligent. It's good if, you know, you keep calling and checking and saying, you know, "Are there spots open?" But as, that's all, in order to be equitable, you have to, you have to stay with the system.
Okay, then, all right. So one of the things I heard you said it was important to you was to make sure there's some more mental health resources in schools. What is it that you would recommend or suggest to improve the mental health that's offered at schools? If there's any at all?
Yeah, well, there are sort of some. It depends. Like, at our school, we have a family counselor who is available to students and their families. They set up appointments. And we have guidance counselors. The problem is, is that guidance counselors don't get to do guidance. They really, well, they guide in terms of course selection, but they're also required for testing. They're required to do, you know, different duties. And we have to make sure that we don't pile on all that extra work onto guidance counselors because they're not available for the students as much as they want to be available. There are also a lot of, we call them off-the-shelf programs that are available for free to different places. Like, there's, the Sandy Hook Promise has a program that's available. There's, it's, they changed the name. The Lighthouse Project, it's through Colorado, where they have programs where they can train teachers and they can train peers to be able to look out for things that other peers might be exhibiting. You know, so that, a lot of times it's a matter of catching it before it gets too far gone that you can't, you know, catch the student before they're too depressed or they're suicidal and things of that nature. So I think we need to take a little off the plate of the guidance counselors so that they can actually work with students in a way that they want to and start to implement some programs into our system. Like, we had a Sandy Hook Promise program. The guy came one time for an hour at our school, but nothing really went further than that. So we just need to make sure that we're following through with those programs and offering them with fidelity.
Okay, all right. So I heard you say like a couple of things. The guidance counselors have too much to do. We don't want to add more to their plate, right? But I had a guidance counselor. I don't think they had a degree in like psychology or mental health therapy or anything like that. So I don't know how it is that they would have been able to provide that service. So is it, I mean, I went to school a long time ago. I graduated from high school like 30 something years ago, right? So things are, you know, might be different right now. But is there like a person that's in the schools that deal with mental health? Or are they, are the guidance counselors, do they have that type of degree or that type of training that they could identify something that's going on with a student and have a mental health issue?
So it depends on the school, and it depends on the guidance counselor. But it would be, I would love to say that we need to bring in mental health counselors. Actually, there's a department at the district that does have mental health counselors. And they just are, were awarded a grant where they're going to start to bring people into the schools. So they wouldn't be at one school all the time. They would rotate through. But there are people in the district that you can contact if you need, like, a psychologist or a specific counselor. And like I said, at our school, we have two family counselors that could provide those services. But they're so busy, it's, you know, it's very difficult to get them. But I don't want to say we should provide, of course, if we had all the money in the world, we should have a dedicated mental health professional that was in our schools to be able to work with the students. But within the confines of what we have, because everyone says to me when I say an idea, "Well, how are you going to pay for that?" You know, we, we don't have that. But you have, if the guidance counselor is a place where students can feel that they can go when they're struggling or have a problem, then they do have, it may not be true, mental health or psychology or like a psychiatrist, but they are trained in that. Like, we have one that's in charge of, if someone is in danger of suicidal, they go to that particular guidance counselor. So they do have training in those things. So it would be a place to start. But I mean, if we could have lots of money, I think that we should have, obviously, mental health service people within our schools, not just for the students, but for the staff too.
Right, okay. And the other thing that you said, that there was a program that's available to train the teachers to be able to identify, like, if a student is struggling or something is going on, that I don't know, I don't want to miss. Is that what I understood that you, that you said?
Yeah, it's called the Lighthouse Project. And there's like five, it's kind of like a rubric. So when, you know, you answer questions and it tells you what to do at each step. So if they answer yes to this, you should do this. If they answer yes to that, and it's just a way, it's really for people that you are concerned that they're going, that they're suicidal. So that's one of those particular programs.
Okay, so another, another thing that happens some in the schools, and I've heard about this thing called a promise program. Are you familiar with the promise program?
I am.
And what's your position on it?
So I believe that we do have to have ways to help our students. I think that they need to know that there are consequences for actions, but the consequences should be applicable to what the behavior is. The promise program, the way it is right now, I don't, I think it needs some improvement. I don't think that students should just be automatically arrested and put in jail or even in, you know, detention for minor infractions. Of course, violent things or things that are bad, we need to address those immediately. But I had a lot of students who came back from the promise program and, you know, some of them, it didn't do anything for them. They didn't do the work that was there. They weren't reformed. It wasn't, so I'd really like to look at that and try to see where the problems are and what needs to be improved in it, or maybe just look at a different diversionary program. But I think the main thing is that we need to teach students that there are always consequences for actions, but the consequences should, should apply to, you know, correct, I don't know how, I'm not phrasing that very well. But, you know, they need to be, the consequences should be applicable to whatever the fraction is.
Okay, so you think the idea of a promise program is good? That, you know, if a student does something that's not violent or something like that, they shouldn't go to jail. They should go to some sort of program. But you, what's probably going on is that maybe the implementation or whatever they're supposed to do once the child gets to the promise program, that might be where the breakdown is? It's like they're probably not following through on all the things that are promised as part of the program?
Right, like there, I know, like, for us as a teacher, when a student goes to the promise program, they asked us, "Send work," you know, because sometimes it's for a week, sometimes for a couple of days. And when the students come back, they're like, "I never got anything. I just sat around." So I've never been there.
When I went to school, they would send the work and all of us would be stuck in a room. And they're like, "Okay, you were bad. You can't be in class with regular folks right now." So they would put us in a room, and there was indoor suspension. And then, you know, we went back to class after it was over. So when they're in a promise program, they're actually physically taken out of their school and sent somewhere else for just a week?
Yeah, or whatever the days are. But yes, they're sent to, there's different centers around the county. And that's where they go for whatever that, it's an alternative to suspension, basically. And, you know, the idea is, because when you suspend kids, And, you know, the idea is, cuz when you suspend kids, you kinda send them home and you don't know what they're doing, at least when they go to the promise program. Or to this, the the alternative to suspension, they're supposed to be engaged in something. And in some centers that may happen, but I I don't think that it happens all the time, and we just need to be consistent. So whatever the expectation is, then you need to be sure that you're following that and everyone understands what the expectations are.
Okay, alright, so if you're on the school board right now and you're faced with sending children and people and figuring out a plan. To send everybody, all the students back to school in the fall, what would be your recommendation or what would? Debbie Hickson's idea of how we go back to school in the fall look like?
Well, I think we want to go back, everybody wants to go back um as much as.
Doesn't wanna go back, he kinda likes that online thing, he just like. No, he doesn't wanna go back, my daughter does, but my son's like, I don't wanna go, you know, but that, no, or like on a serious note though. What 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 is it, what would you recommend, what 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 do you think it would look like um for everyone going back to school in the fall, if at all? Or ideally, what would you want it to be?
Well, ideally, I'd want it to be back a hundred percent the way it was, but you know, that's probably not the safest way for us to do it. So I think that giving parents choices, just as you said, in your household, you have one student who would prefer to be online. And one who wants to go back to school and um. I think that in a way, right now, for us to be able to go back at all, we can't have a hundred percent of the kids there at one time. So if you give them options, you're already gonna take a chunk of people out that don't want to come back, then you can look at see. How many students you have that do want to, and that's where the hybrid comes into play, because if you can only have fourteen students in a classroom. At because of CDC guidelines and, you know, making sure that it's safe, because safety should always be our number one concern. Then you're not gonna be able to have all the kids on campus at one time, you're not gonna have enough staff, you're not gonna have enough of the facilities. So first, you they're doing that now, right, doing the surveys to find out who um really wants to do what. And then they'll have to go, so at first I was thinking, uh hybrid doesn't make sense, because if you can be on school two days a week, why can't you just be there five days a week? And then, as I was listening and playing it out, realized that it isn't that they don't want to have people there five days a week. It's just physically impossible to be safe and follow those guidelines. And and have a hundred percent of who wants to be there all the time. So until that's safe to do, you know, the hybrid is going to be an option where people can get there as much as possible. And that's the goal, is to get them all back on s- on school campus as much as possible.
Okay, so we're all worried about the students, um and how they're gonna make, what it's gonna look like and how they're gonna get back to us, back to school. Um, you know, I have I have a few friends that are teachers that are ummu immunocompromised, right, they have like health conditions that if they get COVID. It may not be pretty, right, so what uh what would you recommend, or if you were on the school board and you had, and and the teacher was like, listen. I can't go back in this classroom, I can't go back onto this campus, wha- what do you do? Do they get fired, or do you find some way to accommodate that, what happens?
Well, I think they'll have options just like students, so if you have students that are gonna be doing online schooling. Those teachers that can't come back to campus would be the ones that you would pair up in in order to be able to make that happen. Because I I mean, I would come back because I I would have to, but I have a son who has a heart condition. And really not the best thing for me to be around people that might be able to pass it through me to him. So I I, you know, I also have that that same situation, so I think just as we're giving options to students, to parents for students. We would have to reach out and be able to do that for teachers as well.
Okay, alrighty, so school safety, that was um one of the things that you talked about, what type of um, what would you like to see? To make um and um, what what would plan in place, or what is it that you would like to see? For you to believe that, you know, the schools are really safe for children, besides the COVID situation, right? COVID is one thing, but just to make sure we don't have any more tragedies in schools, what is it that? What ideally would you would like to see in the school system, and that would make you believe that the school is safe for children and and everyone that works in those buildings?
So the first thing I think we always have to look at is the perimeter, right, if we can keep the perimeter of the school safe. Then we know that we're not gonna have bad people coming in, and so the school system is working towards that, the single point of entry. Having people that are monitoring the gates, the gates should be locked, there should only be one way to get into the school and out. Um and they're doing, they're working towards that, not as as quickly as I'd like to see them do that, but they're getting there. I also think it's really important that we um implement and and put into policy a true code red. Procedure, and right now, there's a little piece of paper that says, you know, a few things, but. The secretaries don't know what they should do, the cafeteria workers don't know what they should do. Um, everybody should, there should be an expectation, if something were to happen, and not just an active shooter, but if there's. Whether, you know, like whatever things might might be um in this, an issue. What are we expected to do, who's supposed to do what, so that you have an understanding that that is not happening right now? They kept saying they were gonna put one into policy, but it hasn't come to fruition yet. I also think that besides active shooters, um we we have mold issues in our schools, we have. Besides COVID, there's a lot of buildings that are dilapidated and that have air quality issues, and we need to make sure that we're. We're honest about that, because we have teachers and students who are getting sick from being in places where there's mold. And someone comes in and tests and says, oh, well, there's no mold here, but there clearly is something going on. Because you have a big group of people that are getting ill. So I think that that's also important that we need to look at in terms of safety, and then also bullying and harassment. Those are all also things that are falling under that safety umbrella, and we have to do a better job of identifying it. And making sure that there are consequences for the actions.
For the actions, okay, alright, so tell us, we're gonna go back to you going to on the school, so what is it that you believe you bring to the school board that's all, that's not there already? Like what makes, what like if Debbie Higgins get onto the school, but what is gonna be different, what is it that you bring to the school board?
So I definitely know that I bring a teacher perspective of someone that's in the classroom, I know that there are people on the school board. That have been teachers in the past, but they haven't been in the classroom for for quite a while. And I can bring that perspective of someone who's who's there right now, and not just a teacher perspective, but I've also been. I'm the magnet coordinator, so I know that there are issues with purchasing, I know that there are issues with transportation. I know some of the struggles with with getting vendors. So I've been sort of an administrator as well, so I think I bring a lot of different unique perspectives. I do have an E S E student who recently aged out of the system, um so there are things there that I think I could also. Look to improve, as you as you know, you have someone in the E S E program and to. I argue with friends all over the place, I know that we have a phenomenal E S E department in our district, but it's not perfect. And we have to definitely look to um see what we can improve to make that better and make sure that we're offering everyone. All of the services that we can, but I have people who live in other states and they don't get any services. So I know that we're blessed for for what we are able to do.
Yeah, it it is a, it is very, it is interesting how different it is depending on where you live, right? So you know people in states where they don't get anything, and I have a friend who lives in New Jersey, and her son gets like ninety thousand dollars worth of services every year. You know that, you know, like seriously, like it's incredible, like what he gets um as part of um um his services. So it really just, it really just depends on like where you live in and, you know, um Florida's doing more than a lot, but we def- there's definitely uh. A lot of room um for improvement, okay, so do you know something that I'm about a grand jury um inquiry about the conduct on the board? Cuz I hear like sometimes those uh meetings get a little testy.
I I do know that there's a grand jury investigating, yeah, I I like, it's it's a little bit dysfunctional, I think that they. That's a good adjective for it, and I feel bad because individually, they're all very nice people. They just, I think they're just very passionate about what they believe in, and they just don't play well in the sandbox together sometimes. But, you know, so I'm the great, I don't know what will happen with the grand jury, but some of it also was some of the mishandling of money. Of the eight hundred million dollar bond, and that's something that the whole county is disappointed in. And and waiting anxiously to see how we're gonna resolve that, that's usually one of the first questions I get. Is, you know, what are you gonna do about the bond money, and to be honest, I, you know, you have to sit down and say, okay. What is truly left, and what are the projects that are left, and start to prioritize them to figure out how you're gonna get the most done. In a timely manner, but they're changing project managers again, they've had so many issues with staffing, and then they had a meeting. That they didn't, under sunshine law, didn't advertise correctly, so then that put them back. So there are silly things that are happening to make this stretch out for so long, and and that has to stop.
Right, so we just hope like once all of that get resolved, nobody gets into trouble, right? So that's uh, let's just hope that it was just like, you know, just some, just a, just a little bit of misunderstanding, it'll all get resolved. And um things will work out, and we don't have any repeats of any um things that have happened in the past uh with the school board, okay? So if there were two things that you can change on the board or about the board, what would that be, what would be the two things you would change?
The length of the meetings.
That's right, there was one that was from like ten to five, I was like, what?
They have been um, a- and I, what other things would I change, I guess the um. The way that they seem to interact with each other, I, so I, I try to be a fixer, you know, I wanna, I wanna be collaborative. I wanna look at something and say, okay, you believe this, and I believe this, so how do we come together? Cuz our our goal is the same always, and I believe that on the school board, all of the members that are on there now, their goal is the best education. For our students, we just believe there's different paths to get there, so, you know, I'm usually a person that will say, okay, but. Here's what I believe, and then if you believe that, how do, how do we mesh that, how do we come in the middle? So that we get what we need to get done, instead of arguing about it, I mean, I wouldn't be hard fast to say my way is the only way. And I I see that sometimes on the board, they're not really um flexible and and listening. To other suggestions and trying to come up with a consensus.
Okay, alright, so so this is probably gonna be the toughest question that I ask you, and and I do it to everybody, there's always one question that people don't like. That might make them a little uncomfortable, and so your question, your uncomfortable question, it may may or may or may not be an uncomfortable question, right? It's like my understanding was that you were um, you were uh registered as a Republican, and prior to um running, you registered as a Democrat. You've always been registered as a Democrat? Okay, then, alright, so I'm good, oh, your whole life, okay, I'm glad that you cleared that up, I'm glad.
But just a a quick note there, remember that the at-large seat is.
Absolutely, absolutely, I understand that, okay, alright, I understand that, and I'm glad to hear that, that's um, that was like some, that was some bad intel. And um thank you for that, so tell every, tell people how to get in touch with you, if they wanna donate to your campaign, or if they want to uh. If they wanna donate, volunteer some time, how would they be able to get in touch with you, give us all your social media handles?
Yes, so I'm on um Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, it's Debbie Hickson. For uh Broward County School Board at Large is the Facebook, my website is Debbie, my head, Debbie Hickson. Dot Wix site, dot Wix site, so it's W I X.
See it, I can see that Debbie Hickson writes for our schools, um but I don't see the website, I don't know um why.
Oh, no, no, I was just showing him my name.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, okay.
They spell it right.
Yes, okay.
Everybody adds an E and an S. Debbie Hickson dot Wix site, W I X S I T E dot com slash Broward. That's the website, so you can donate on there, there's a a place where you can volunteer, you can also register. Um information to register to vote, to get your vote by mail, if you want to do that, um I believe tomorrow is the deadline for the vote by mail.
Oh, I don't, oh, I don't, I don't, I don't, that's not what I heard, but you know, hope maybe that's what it is. Um, there was one other thing, so I was going through my notes as you was giving your social media handle, so would you fire the superintendent? Are you are, are you happy with the work that he's doing?
So it's it, that's, that's a loaded question.
Okay, I'm looking for me.
I am not running to try to fire the superintendent. Um, I, to be honest, I don't think anyone could really answer that question for you right now with not being on the board. Because there's a lot of information and a lot of research that goes into doing an evaluation for him. I'm not privy to that.
He has a contract until like twenty twenty four or something like that, right?
Right, so I, but I do believe you have to evaluate him every year, I'm pretty sure, but I would have to see, but, you know, based on. I don't have all the information, so am am I gonna go in 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 November and 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 say, okay, let's take a vote to get rid of Mr. Runcie? I am absolutely not gonna do that, there are things that he's done very well in our district, he's done a great job within industry certifications. He's done great job on partnering up with businesses, but there are things that I think he needs improvement on, I think he.
One of those things, what do you think he needs to, he could or he needs to do better?
So I think he needs to make more um divisive decisions, I think that sometimes he's a little wishy-washy, for a better word.
Decision, what does that mean, like, you know, we we wanna be united, we wanna have a united front, what do you mean he needs to make a dis- divisive decision, what is that?
So sometime, sometimes he'll make a decision and then he'll, when people complain about it, he changes to something else, and then.
They're complaining, or maybe they're just giving him an option to see it a different way?
Well, then, my thought is you need to get all that information before you make the decision. And then, when people complain, you can say, I made the decision based on the best facts that I had.
At the time, it might be some new facts that come out, though.
And then that's okay, so then you say based on new facts, but that's not how it comes out, it it, and I think it looks like we're pitting people against each other. As you mentioned, you know, areas seem to get more resources and things, it's sort of similar to that, whoever yells the loudest. Gets the most stuff, so.
How that works, so I think I need to start yelling some more then, you know what I mean, I need some stuff.
Yes, well, and and that's, you know, sometimes an issue, so I think it needs to be based on facts, and so we need to to be better. And I think we need to communicate better, and teachers don't feel valued, and they feel as if the superintendent doesn't value them. Whether he does or not, you know, is to be seen, but they don't feel that way, so he has to do better. At bringing up the morale of the staff so that we are a cohesive u- u- unit, so that we're all working. And and collaborating and compromising and understanding what it is we want.
So, but don't the teachers have like about four or five bosses before Runcie becomes their boss? So how is it that he would be responsible for making teachers happy in the classroom, and then they're they're like, you know. Like I said, about five or six people in between him and those teachers, why does, why do you believe that falls on him? To keep the morale high of teachers in a particular school or the school system overall?
He's the, he's the over, he's the head leader of the school system, right, and that's, that's the person that they're looking to. And it always, it appears to teachers as if he's the one making decisions that are bringing their morale down. So that, and I think we need to train managers better, to be better communicators, and I think all of that falls on the leader. You can't have all the accolades and not take some of the failures.
Blows, I get it, cuz the fish rise from the head, so I mean, I I I understand that, so like, um, so if you you think it's because of him. That a lot of the teachers are in the classroom are not happy?
It's it's not only him, but he is the leader, and so if he, if he takes it upon himself to figure out. How to change that, to sit down with a group of teachers, to hear what they have to say, and. And do that often, and let them have input into things, then, you know, it's a start, but I think also. He has to, I think we need to train our managers better, I don't think that they're always um. They don't make their staff feel like they're part of that that planning process, and it isn't just him.
Okay, and so how is it that they can get that training, like everything costs money, right, like everything costs money, how is it that we, is that like, can they train them? Or should they just have different people come in?
Well, I mean, they have tons of people downtown, they have a human resource department that that, you know, we have lots of people in Casey Wright. That are able to do those trainings, so I don't think it's extra money, they just need to, some of those off-the-shelf programs I was mentioning to you. All deal with, you know, we're talking about getting rid of implicit bias, and how do we teach our teachers to be more equitable? And to have more um culturally res- um responsive um. Curriculum and stuff, so we have people who are training, and this is their job, so they need to just make sure that. There, when they're training the managers and the principals and assistant principals, that some of that includes. The training on how we can better communicate and make our schools a more collaborative place. Some of them are awesome, I work at one that's phenomenal, so I don't have those issues, but I hear a lot of my friends complaining about those things. So how is, like, my principal is amazing, maybe she could be a person that goes in and and teach. Says what her best practices are at her school so that she helps other people, so it doesn't necessarily have to cost you extra money.
Yeah, so I do have a problem with some of the stuff they're teaching in co- in school, though, right? So I I I I wanna know whoever that person is that decides on what books they're gonna buy and what curriculum, if I could have a chat with them, I would really love to do that. Because some of the stuff really isn't inclu- it it really isn't inclusive, and I um, and I have to supplement some of the. I have to supplement the learning, like, you know, my son, for instance, fourth grade goes to Saint Augustine, are you, you, are you, do you remember that? Or, I don't know if you, when you had a fourth grader, they go to this trip and say Augustine, and I had a whole, I have a lot of problems with that, right, I just have a lot of problems with that. And I just kind of uh, I think they need to talk to more people, um and particularly more people of color. Um, when they decide on taking people's children to that trip, right, because there's some parts of that trip that's very insensitive, and there's also some of the. Things that they learn as they build up to that trip, that's like, who, are you people serious, like, I I I mean, it was like, it was incredible. It was incredible that no one understood this, right, so yeah, I think that's definitely something that's important. You know, whoever the new board member is, I really would like to see some cultural diversity on there, but it's up to the people to decide. You, you know, you've answered the questions, you've done a lot of great stuff, I'm not endorsing or anything like that, I just really wanted to talk to you. And see that at least, you know, like, you would be the person that would advocate for that and try to, you know, just, cuz I think if if if. Children are learning about like true American history, real American history, learning about all the beautiful people that. Made this whole thing happen, this great nation happen, some of the things that we're seeing when kids or adults or some of the interactions that we're seeing. That people are having with law enforcement, I don't think what happened, I think a lot of it is out of ignorance, like they don't know, they don't understand, they're just um. Making their decisions about people on a lot of negative images and misrepresentations that they're seeing, and that's why these interactions are becoming so toxic. And I think a lot of that miseducation happens in school, right, a lot of that miseducation happen in school. Because some of us live in environments where we don't meet a whole, you know, a whole bunch or a whole different types of people, but most of us go to school. Where there's all different types of people, and schools are places of learning, and I think if they were more uh woke about how it is that they're teaching. That some of this, some, a lot of this wouldn't happen, and you know, maybe we can't change all of it right now with the generation that we have. But at least the children that we're we're bringing up, we need to be conscious of that and do a better job of raising these and educating this new um generation. Of um of students and children, so that's something that I hope you would, you know, be on board trying to do. And tell them, say, y'all need to look at that book again and double check what it is that's um that you're teaching, cuz there is like a movement, like today. Um, there's um the Redskins, the Washington Redskin is trying to decide whether or not they're gonna change the name or the logo of that team. And part of it is because, you know, there's some insensitivity in that, right, you know, there's there's some, there's some insensitivity in that. It's uh ultimately up to the owner, but this is a time, like this is really a day of reckoning, well, uh, you know, not a day, a moment. Where people really need to, you know, step back and take a look to make sure that they are doing things that are more progressive and more inclusive. Of all the people, all the wonderful, different people that make up, you know, this great nation that we call the United States, you know?
Absolutely, we should be celebrating all. Absolutely, we should be celebrating all the differences, that's what makes America great. That we're, it's an opportunity for anybody that comes to be successful. And that's exactly what schools should be, we should be celebrating all the differences that we have. You know, as I said, I'm blessed to be at South Broward, because I see that all the time. And it's so nice to see the groups of students and how they, they celebrate the differences that they have there. And it doesn't hinder them from being friends or from participating in activities together. So I, I would love to take the model that we have at South Broward and make sure that that's something across the county.
That's awesome, all right, so tell people how to get in touch with you again, and then I want you to have the last word.
Okay, so you can find me on Facebook, on Twitter or on Instagram. And my website is Debbie Hickson dot Wixsite dot com slash Broward. I know it's long, sorry. And the last word that I would say is, I am the right person for this countywide seat at this time. I bring thirty-one years of experience in education, not just as, not beyond the classroom. But also as a magnet coordinator, my sons graduated from South Broward High School, as did I. My younger son is in E S, was in the E S D, so I understand that. My older son was in R O T C in sports. I've been a coach, I've been a club sponsor, I have done Special Olympics coaching. I've been involved in Boy Scouts, I was the club, the pack leader for, you know, so I've been involved in our community. I'm invested in this community, I'm invested in education and I'm invested in Broward County. And I am excited for the opportunity to serve everyone on our school board.
All right, so tell them when they should vote for you.
So voting is August eighteenth, that is the day, but you can vote by mail and that should be coming out, actually, next week, I think, sometime. So please make sure that you vote, it's a primary election. And you have to, before or on August eighteenth, vote for Debbie Hickson for Broward County School Board Seat Nine.
Thank you so much for spending some time with me, have a good day.
Thank you, thank you for inviting me.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.